For people to get on, so we can get started. Seems like the numbers of participants have slowed, so we're going to go ahead and get started. I'm going to ask Ms. Andracy to help me with the call to order. I think we have someone that's going to help us gabble in our session.
That's right. This evening, our I Led the Pledge student, Danise Okupanabi, is a fourth grader at Rowan. He said he would be willing to help us open up the meeting. Danise, do you want to come on up and go ahead and gavel?
Come on.
Come on.
You can come all the way up here. Nope, right here. Just come right over here.
Remember the gavel?
Right here. Danise, right here for the gavel. So, three real good taps. Bang, bang, bang. Perfect. Thank you very much. Thank you. With that tap of the gavel, I would like to call the Seneca Valley Schools District School Board Action Meeting of January 19th, 2021 to order. I'd ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence, and this will be in memory of those who have lost their lives due to the COVID-19, and in reflection to those who are mourning loved ones recovering from the illness or have been negatively impacted during this time. Thank you very much. Ms. Andracy, I'll turn it back over to you for I Led the Pledge.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, I would like to introduce to all of you, Danise Okupanabi, a fourth grader at Rowan Elementary School. Let's welcome Danise as he comes to the microphone. So just to give you a little bit of background information on Danise, his parents are Shueb and Imoke Amoni Okupanabi. He is also a big and little brother to Shezza, a freshman here at the Intermediate High School, and Emma Kay, a first grader also at Rowan Elementary School. Danise was nominated this evening by Rowan Elementary Principal Nan Farmer, and I'd like to welcome and thank Ms. Farmer for being here tonight in support of Danise. Danise tells us his favorite subject is English Language Arts. Very specifically, he loves spelling. When he grows up, he would like to be a doctor like his dad. And Danise, I think you said you wanted to share one other thing about yourself this evening?
My favorite color is blue.
Your favorite color is blue. Seneca blue, right? All right. So at this time, I would invite everyone here in the auditorium and at home, if they are able to stand and join us and Danise in leading the Pledge of Allegiance. Danise, when you're ready.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible for liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Now, as you can see, Danise received his medal, his I Led the Pledge shirt, and all of his Seneca swag a little earlier before the meeting. So we thank all of you for being here this evening, and once again, great job. So.
Thank you.
I'll turn it back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. So at this time, we will take our roll call. Lisa?
Ms. Bradle?
Here.
Mr. Detulio?
Here.
Ms. Harrison?
Here.
Mr. Hester?
Here.
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Nichol?
Present.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Ms. Whittle?
Here.
And Mr. Widowsen?
Here.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to our information reports. I'll invite Ms. Andracy back up.
Thank you again, Mr. President. We have one item of recognition this evening. Late in 2020, Seneca Valley's first ever Women in Engineering Cyber Patriot Team placed in the Gold Division, the second highest division possible, during the Cyber Patriot National Youth Cyber Defense Competition. As part of the competition, students were challenged to find and fix cybersecurity vulnerabilities and virtual operating systems. Seneca Valley's team, which was formed by Junior Veronica Pimminova, includes Juniors Courtney Beals and Vivian Palmer and Senior Delini Ranawira. Cyber Patriot is the national youth cyber education program created by the Air Force Association to inspire K-12 students toward careers in cybersecurity or other STEM disciplines critical to the nation's future. We applaud and congratulate all those young women. Under dates to remember, January 26th will be our report card release date for grades seven through 12, and then February 1st, we'll be back here at 7:00 PM for the School Board Work Session Meeting for February. And unless you have questions, Mr. President, that is all I have.
I do not have any questions. Do any of the board members have questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will move on with the rest of our meeting. In your backup, you will find the financial reports for operations, senior high activities, intermediate high activities, athletics, food services, tax collection, and capital projects funds. And if you have any questions, I'm sure you've already addressed those with Ms. Bertner. We'll move on in our agenda to the next item, which is the COVID-19 update. Dr. Vitell?
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, I would like to review first the school building COVID cases. As of today, we have eight active staff cases and 16 active student cases. Now, I understand when you look at the dashboard, you may not see all of those numbers, and I want to explain why. About two weeks ago to a week and a half ago, the Pennsylvania Department of Education and the Pennsylvania Department of Health ruled that we, if we close on Fridays, which we are essentially closed, we still have staff in the building, but students are not here. That's a remote Friday for us. And any school that has something like that on a remote Friday, and then Saturday and Sunday, we are not here. And of course, this week, the students weren't here on Monday, although adults were here. You can count that as part of your temporary closure. And so if you have a preemptive temporary closure, you can then zero out your active cases. Although that is a bit confusing for our parents who look at that and say, oh, you have zero or one cases, and you're still in cohort. That is not true. We have eight active staff cases and 16 active student cases as of today. In addition, this week, keep in mind that we don't have a remote Friday because of being off Monday. And so we won't be able to zero out the cases this Saturday. So the state counts in a 14-day rolling average, active cases when you don't have a temporary closure or a remote Friday. So we will be monitoring this very closely. We're also working with our technology department to put things into the dashboard to make that more concise and more easily understood. So probably no later than this Friday, maybe even by Thursday, you will see the dashboard will take the inactive cases off because that's confusing people as well. Although we will keep those internally, and anyone in the public that wants to know those numbers, we're willing to share. But we will now have two active case designations. One will be the normal active case, someone's out with COVID, and they're out for 14 days. So that will be one count. The other count will be active cases that count only towards a closure. That way, we hope our public and our parents understand that much better. So I wanted to explain that. We don't have zero cases. We do have active cases. It's the way it's being recorded for a temporary closure. Community transmission rate, as I reported last week, Butler County is still listed as substantial with community transmission. In order to get back to moderate transmission, we need to have less than 100 new cases in a seven-day period and hit other benchmarks like 10% PCR positivity rate. Those are not our standards. Those are standards as delineated by the Pennsylvania Department of Education and the Pennsylvania Department of Health. We don't make those standards up. We don't set those standards or those benchmarks. Those are driven from the state, those two entities. Currently, the most recent seven days in Butler County, January 8th through the 14th, we are at 14.3% PCR positivity rate, and that is down just slightly from last week at 14.4. But we also know that that is approximately one week behind. Sometimes it can even be about 10 days behind. The incident rate, the most recent record in the public data, the last seven days there is listed as January 1st through the 7th, and this is per 100,000 residents. So we are sitting at 294.9, 294 cases point nine, essentially 295 cases. That is down from the previous week of 317 cases when it comes to incident rates. So the numbers are going in the right direction, albeit slow, they're going in the right direction. In Butler County, we have 32 less confirmed cases than we had the week prior, so that's going down. The differences in weekly confirmed cases, so the way the department figures this out, the Department of Health and the Department of Education, they take the most recent seven days versus the previous seven days. So in this case count, they're looking at January 1st through the 7th, Butler County, and they're comparing that to December 25th through 31st. We are down by 55 cases there. The Butler County daily COVID rate, we also go into that each day. Lisa Mislin, who is sitting here with us, she mines that data just on our ZIP codes. So when people say to me, we can't look at the state numbers, you can't necessarily look at the county numbers, we're a big county. I would agree, but those are all data points we are looking at. But then we're looking at the ZIP code numbers. They too are going in the right direction. Now, again, they're not at the level we were in in August, September, or early October, where we were only seeing four to five new cases on average per day on a 14-day rolling period. Right before we went to full remote in November, we were looking at 200 cases a day. Today, we're looking at 132.4. That's really good news. It's not great news, but we are going in the right direction. The ZIP code cases, when we mine those, today, we're looking at 41 new cases on a 14-day rolling average in 100,000, a group of 100,000 residents. Again, to give you an example, Butler County has 200,000 residents, and Seneca Valley has approximately 50,000 residents. So that shows you the population. The statewide percent positivity rate for the week of January 8th through the 14th is 12.7. The next item I wanted to point out, and again, that is down from the week prior. So again, going in the right direction, not quite where we need it to be to look at that five-day-a-week model, but it is getting better. So that is good news so far. The next item I want to talk about is COVID vaccinations. In this school district and in the state, the 1A level in the state of Pennsylvania and in this county is open to healthcare providers. We found out last week that it was also open to our school psychologists, our speech and language therapists, and our one-on-one paraprofessionals who are personal care assistants that bill for Medicaid that work with some of our students. We found out that they would qualify because they are clinicians that work in a school setting. So the great news is this weekend, a number of our speech and language therapists, school psychologists, got vaccinated on Sunday, some on Monday, and some today. We are up to around 28 to 30 employees now that have been vaccinated with their first shot. That's really good news. We, however, in order to get all of our teachers vaccinated, the state has to open to 1B category, which is essential workers, critical workers, and teachers are in that category. So we're hoping that will move quick. We know today, the Pennsylvania Department of Health announced that anyone over the age of 65, that the vaccinations are now open to them. So again, each week, as more categories open, we are in a much better position with the adults in our building to be working with children. So I'm very pleased. I wish that were going faster, but I don't think I'm the only one that wishes that. I want to remind our public that there will likely, I hope there won't be, but there will likely be temporary closures, especially this week because we can't zero out the dashboard. We have no proof that there is school-to-school transmission. We do have two cases that were investigated this weekend as possible school transmission, adult-to-adult and then student-to-adult. We can't rule out that that was school-to-school transmission, but we also can't say that it was, we can't say it was, and we can't say it was not. It could have been coincidence, but you know, we're working with the Department of Health on those two cases. If there is a temporary closure, remember, we are now following the Pennsylvania Department of Education, the Pennsylvania Department of Health updates for temporary closures with schools. Our elementaries are deemed medium buildings for the size of their student population, and therefore, if we have four to six cases in those buildings, we will need to look at a three-to-seven-day closure. Now, we know at Seneca Valley that our contact tracing and our case investigations that are done by Nurse Williams and our building-level nurses, they work hand-in-hand with the Department of Health. We've been able to get those done really quickly in the cohort model. When you come back five days a week, that's more difficult because you have more numbers. You have higher community cases, therefore COVID's coming in. It doesn't matter how many mitigations we put in place, COVID is still coming in because of the community and the home transmission. In the medium buildings, if we have seven or more cases, the minimum the state recommends is a 14-day closure. We hope not to get to that point. And as a reminder, in the medium elementary buildings, we believe we could do a three-day closure versus a four, five, six, seven-day closure, as long as it's not school-to-school transmission, as long as we can get those rooms cleaned quickly. This board invested in the sprayers, so we can mist and spray rooms quite quickly in the evening and have those disinfected. So we believe if we have four to six cases in an elementary building, we could close for three days instead of four, five, six, or seven. And if we have seven cases, we will need to close for 14 days, seven or more cases. But again, we hope not to get to that point. And if the numbers keep going in the direction that they are moving in small increments lower, which is good, we hope not to have any temporary closures. A reminder to the public and to our parents, the large buildings are our secondary buildings. That's your Ryan Glower Middle School, Intermediate High School, Senior High. They have 1,000 or more students, and so we get a little more leadway in those buildings. There, you can have six to 10 cases in one of those buildings. This is staff and students combined. That's how they count the cases. And you, again, could do a three-to-seven-day closure. If you can get your cleaning and your case investigations, contact tracing done quickly, and we know we can. Sadly, we've gotten pretty good at all of that. In the large buildings, the only way we would be looking at a 14-day closure if we would have 11 or more cases in that 14-day rolling period. And again, once you have that three-day closure, that starts your numbers over again. In two weeks, when we do the remote Friday, not this Friday, but the next Friday, again, that allows us to reset cases without even getting to, it allows us to reset our actives to zero. And so I just want to remind people that we're not making these numbers up. They're not arbitrary, and they are driven from formulas at the state level and the Department of Health. And finally, I want to repeat what I repeated last week, and that is staying in cohort keeps our quarantine numbers down, and it gives us time to make sure we can do the contract tracing and the case investigations with the Pennsylvania Department of Health and do it effectively. We're really trying to not paint these quarantines with a large brush, and we're really trying to make sure we understand who was within six feet of another person who might have been contagious at that time, two days prior to the onset of symptoms, without putting a large amount of students in quarantine. Remote Fridays, again, allows us to reset because that's a temporary closure. But that does not mean that we won't have cases who are out on quarantines or fulfilling their quarantine. Again, we as administrators and teachers know how difficult this is for parents. Many of us are parents. We want kids to be back here more than anything five days a week. But we have to see the community numbers come down a little more before we can get students back five days a week, or we will have a lot of temporary closures. Right now, in cohort, we think we can keep the temporary closures, we hope, at a minimum. I know parents want to automatically jump and compare Seneca Valley to other districts. That's not fair. We have different-sized buildings. We have, you know, a different context in every school district. And I'll remind the public that we did sign an attestation form that those recommendations by the state are now requirements. And my name is on that, and the board president's name is on that. And so we must follow those rules that we agreed to. The students are great at following the masking rules. The adults are great. We just, we need a little more patience. Our hope is that by February 8th, we can get closer to that five-day-a-week model again, maybe sooner. But remember, we need to be in moderate for two consecutive weeks. I am hopeful, but we can't make any promises. We do know that the more people that get vaccinated in our community, and I know there are different opinions on that, but the more people that get vaccinated in our community, the better our numbers should become. So we are hopeful as vaccinations open up and are more accessible, and now the age 65 and up group opened today, that should help our COVID numbers in this county as well. I'm still asking for patience. I'm still asking for, you know, people to realize that teachers and administrators and the school board, we want kids back five days a week, but we need to do this carefully so that we can guarantee contact tracing and that we can guarantee that we're working closely with the Department of Health so as not to spread the numbers further in our county and in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you for the update, Dr. Vitell. Are there any questions or comments from members of the board? Not seeing any. I just want to make sure that I reiterate what Dr. Vitell was saying, that, you know, everyone communication to us, things like that about getting back to school, just do it. We don't have that ability. We do have to follow the rules that PDE and DOH put in, especially with the attestation form. If we don't, they can come in and force us to be 100% remote. So keep that in mind. We're doing it in a controlled way, making sure we're doing it by the book so that we can go back. Other districts are doing different things. They have smaller buildings. They can do different things, but they're under the same rules as well. That's why you will see and you will hear of, you know, these temporary closures Dr. Vitell was talking about. Our intent is to have none of those. We don't want to start one model and have to go to another or have to have a temporary closure. Our goal is to not have those with the intent of getting back to five-day-a-week instruction as soon as possible. That can only happen if the Department of Education, Department of Health say, you are in the moderate, and you're not substantial anymore. We do not make that decision because of the rules that are set in place. They are requirements now, they're not recommendations, as Dr. Vitell said. So many people seem to miss that because they hear something else on the news or the coverage. There are a lot of rules that are going on that we have to follow, and this is part of it. And as Dr. Vitell was saying, it's critical that we have the community involvement to get the numbers down so that we can get back to moderate and we can get back to five-day-a-week instructions. We definitely need your help out there. No other questions or comments? We'll move on then to the Program of Studies for the 2021-2022 school year, and this is going to be Dr. McKinley and Dr. Polano. I'm not sure which one is going to start.
Good evening. Yes, I will start. Thank you. And this is one of my favorite times of the year when I get to share what we're doing new and different in the Program of Studies. I'm going to share my screen for those who are online. And board members who are in attendance in the auditorium, hopefully you have a hard copy that you can follow along. So I will have the first part of the presentation, and then Dr. Polano will, I'll turn it over to her after a bit. So in this presentation, we're going to be doing, I'm going to be sharing additions of the new courses, changes to the online Program Studies and more in the format and the presentation. I'm going to talk a little bit about customized learning and a few other things. And Dr. Polano will be sharing changes to Keystone Assessments and Graduation Requirements that have come about. As far as the new courses are concerned, business courses, we're adding quite a few. You can see some traditional and some cyber there. One of the ones I'm excited about, I'm excited about all of them, but specifically Personal Finance 2. We've had a strong enough response to Personal Finance 1 that we've been approached about expanding that. So we're able to do that this year. So hopefully, we get a good number of students signing up for that. And you can see some of the cyber ones there as well. Continuing with the new courses, we have physical education and health. We're introducing cyber through cyber, our cyber program, the Introduction to Nursing Careers. So we're excited about that. And then in the performing arts area, one great thing, and we've seen it coming for quite a while, we are adding a high school chamber orchestra. And that is simply because the numbers. Ever since we added the elementary orchestra program, the numbers have been coming up through. They hit the middle school, and now they're finally hitting the high school. So we have a large number of students in that program, just continues to grow through our excellent instructors. And then, one thing we noticed, especially this year with the number of students that we had opt for Seneca Valley Academy of Choice Cyber Program, the asynchronous program, there are still a large number of students this year that wanted to take band or orchestra, chorus or dance. And so they are able to participate even the second semester this year, and we're carrying that on into next year. We're calling them appreciation courses because the students will still be home doing it and syncing in with the students here, but this is a new type of format for those courses as well. One thing I'm extremely excited about, back in August, we had a presentation by some of our alumni. And we've been doing a lot of work behind the scenes, and I put it out to our teachers in a curriculum meeting in October. And one teacher, about three minutes after the curriculum meeting ended, emailed me, said I'd be thrilled to look into starting this course. So we're looking at, it's called Diverse Voices in U.S. History. And what you see in front of you is just a draft. It's not finalized by any means, but they're working on this in the background. We've also sent it out to adult members of our community diversity program, getting feedback from them. We've had a couple different student-focused meetings to get feedback from them as well. So we're taking all that into account and moving forward, but we're thrilled to announce we're offering the semester course for next school year. It will start as an elective, and we're anxious to see what type of student turnout we'll get for the registration and then move forward from there. I really see this course evolving over time and hopefully taking the place of some required courses and/or expanding into different semester courses through this. So again, we're very excited about being able to offer that for next year. I want to talk a little bit about customized learning, and we've had, we've talked about this before, even myself, we view the board about this, but we're going to take a little different slant on this. And we're really looking at students who are struggling to engage with their learning. Special education students, they have staffings, they have IEP meetings, they have a lot of people taking a strong look at what they're doing. Our higher achieving students do really well and have outlets where they can also get support. But we're really looking for that student who may not be on either end of that spectrum, and how can we engage them better in their education? So we are looking at identifying those students, working with our counselors and administrators. This is mainly going to be a high school thing where students are able to have more say in their learning. I read a recent article by Thomas Friedman, who had written a while ago now, The World is Flat. Here's a quote that I got from him. "The most critical role for K-12 educators will be to equip young people with the curiosity and passion to be lifelong learners who feel ownership over their education." The last part of that quote really hits me, who feel ownership over their education. And that's kind of what we're trying to do. That last bullet there on the slide, you can see students are still going to meet the standards of the course. They're going to be able to meet the graduation requirements. But we're going to look to them to hopefully work with our staff at customizing their learning and what that may look like. So we're, again, really excited about moving forward with that. And I just have a snippet here. I would invite you to go into, onto our webpage and look at this. And I just have a snippet here. I would invite you to go into, onto our webpage and look at this. But because of the type of presentation this had to be, I just put a snippet on here. The, the program of studies in the past, we have added so much to it. There is just so much information that, I'll be honest with you, sometimes I even got lost in it. And I've helped to create it. So what we're doing and what we've done is worked with our IT department to put specific filters in this, in the presentation of all the information of the courses, of the required courses, the electives, the career clusters is so much cleaner now. I invite you to go and check it out. And that's just one thing we're real excited about is a new look format. Another thing that's going to be new for next year that we're still in development, and again, really excited about this is we're going to be adding to our Seneca Valley Academy of Choice Program. All through the time of its history, they have been asynchronous courses or not live courses. And we've grown that into a really strong program in which we've shared with other school districts as well. The component that we're going to be adding to it, and again, we're going to start small, but over time it will grow, is the synchronous aspect. This year, forced by the pandemic, our teachers have been forced into live streaming their classes. And where we started in March isn't anywhere where we are now with that. We've grown much more accustomed to it. And there are teachers that are really solid with their instruction with it now. And because of that, we want to continue to grow and make these offerings to our students and even our families. And so we want to begin to offer synchronous courses for those students, live courses by a Seneca Valley live teacher in the schedule. So when the registration forms come out in March, that's one option that some classes will have in addition to the traditional or to the asynchronous Academy of Choice cyber classes that we already are. So again, just, just real excited about that. What I'm going to do now is I'm going to turn my portion of the program over to Dr. Polano. She is our Director of Analytics and Federal Programs. Again, she's going to talk about Keystone exams and also new graduation requirements. What I do want to say before I do turn it over is that we are going to have time for questions at the end of her slides and at the end of hers. So if you have questions for me, please save them for that time and we'll take questions over any of the presentations at that time. Thank you.
McKinley. Dr. McKinley alluded earlier that we have some additional courses that of course encourage student engagement and will also allow students the opportunity to meet the statewide and local graduation requirements. So I'd like to share with you this evening a few updates that include specific information to the statewide graduation requirements and also the administration of the Keystone exams. The Keystone exams, as you know, are end of course assessments that are designed to assess proficiency in Algebra I, Biology and Literature. These are also the statewide assessments that Pennsylvania uses to comply with the federal accountability mandates. In a typical school year, the assessment data provides schools with information about the effectiveness of the curriculum as well as instructional strategies and resources. So the following slides will outline the connection that exists between the Keystone exams and the state graduation requirements. So as you can see on this slide, Pennsylvania statewide graduation requirements will take effect with the class of 2023, which is this year's sophomore class. The Pennsylvania Department of Education provides five options or pathways for students to meet the state graduation requirements. And the options are as follows. So you can see that first one is a Keystone proficiency pathway. Another option is the Keystone composite pathway. The alternative assessment pathway is also an option. It also includes an evidence-based pathway and a career and technical education pathway. So as you can see, these first two pathways are based solely on Keystone exam scores. Therefore, for some students and some students only, Keystone exams may be directly connected to how they meet the statewide graduation requirement. So on the next slide, I'm going to talk just a little bit about the Keystone exam test administration with some additional information about its connectedness to the graduation requirement. So this school year, for any student that is currently enrolled in a Keystone trigger course, that being Algebra I, Biology or Literature in Grade 10, the end of year Keystone exams will be administered this spring. This next bit of information is specific to students who were enrolled in a Keystone trigger course last school year. So this school year, the exam for those students will be administered in the spring. But the students that were enrolled in a Keystone trigger course last school year were part of a waiver for state assessments. And because that waiver was approved, state assessments were not administered last spring. Therefore, any student that was enrolled in a Keystone trigger course last school year is now determined to be proficient on that Keystone exam if the student earned a passing grade in that course. So last school year, the assessments were not administered due to a federal accountability waiver. Those students who were enrolled in the trigger course last year are now considered to be proficient as long as they also passed the trigger course. So although these students who were enrolled in the Keystone exam trigger course last school year are not required to take the associated Keystone exam, parents or guardians may opt to enroll their student in a Keystone exam to earn a numerical score, which can be applied to pathway two, the Keystone composite pathway. So for anyone that feels that the Keystone composite pathway is of interest and potentially the way in which he or she would like to meet the graduation requirements, one may choose or opt to participate in a future Keystone test administration window in order to earn that numerical value. While students are considered proficient who were in a Keystone trigger course last school year, if they pass the course, they did not receive a numerical score. And that numerical score could be part of the Keystone composite pathway, should a student choose to pursue that pathway. As additional information becomes available regarding these specific assessments and their dates, the district will communicate directly with the parents and guardians of the participating students. The district has been working diligently, of course, to compile this information and to communicate it to all stakeholders, that being teachers, administrators, parents and students alike, how last year's waiver assessment potentially impacted the graduation pathways, how the Keystone exam test administration is in part considered with the graduation pathways. So there is a lot of additional information specific to each pathway that you can locate on the district website. So the next slide will show you how you can find that information. Under the school board tab, of course, you can see the policy that refers directly to graduation requirements. And under academics, under state assessments, you can find information specific to the waiver, the upcoming test administration and the Keystone exams, and also how that's connected to the different pathways for graduation. There is an informational video that you can watch on the website. There is also an FAQ that's available on the website in addition to specific information that contains what is within each one of those graduation pathways. And that is all I have. So if there are any questions for us, please let us know.
Any questions? Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. And with your permission, I have two questions, one each for Dr. McKinley and Dr. Polano. Dr. McKinley, on the diverse voices in U.S. history. Congratulations for moving this from discussion to reality. I think that's great, but when we were heavily invested in this prior, there was discussion about including culturally sensitive teaching throughout the Seneca Valley experience, perhaps starting as young as kindergarten and moving through grade 12. Can you help me understand, this sounds like a class in senior high school. Are we still thinking about a more expansive experience or is this kind of a one and done here?
Absolutely. And yeah, thank you for asking that. We have met this year with different curriculum groups and we have more planned. And we have been working with a, we found a culturally responsive tool coming out of the University of New York. And we had that vetted and we are using that tool with our participants on the curriculum committees to take a look at their curriculum and their resources to determine the appropriateness of them and to find, you know, where, where are we strong with this and where are the gaps? And so to date, I've met with four departments. I know Dr. McCarty is also met with some and is still planning on meeting with others for the K to six realm. So we're taking a full K to 12 look at all of our courses where it applies and to see if the curriculum is in need of adjustment or if the resources are in need of adjustment. But to add where we can, where there are gaps, to change if necessary and identify too where we're strong and to enhance that as well. So that's going on simultaneously as we're developing this new course.
Thank you, Dr. McKinley. That was a great answer. I thought there'd be more pieces to the puzzle. And indeed, you've given me comfort in that direction. Dr. Polano, if I may, I'm just trying to absorb all of the new state graduation requirements. And there are five pathways. The two to the left, so to speak, the two Keystone pathways are pretty straightforward. But the three, the center and three to the right, the alternative pathway, the evidence-based pathway and the CTE pathway. How late in the student's high school career do they need to make a decision as to what pathway they're going to be on? And is there any latitude or wiggle room for them to change if they think that the pathway they've chosen is not the right one for them?
Yes, absolutely. We have spoken to some stakeholder groups, including our school counselors and our administrators. Students begin taking Keystone exams dependent upon their course and their enrollment. So that, that is, that differs across the board just depending on the student. But in our estimation, looking at the options that exist outside of the Keystone and the Keystone proficiency pathway, there are many opportunities for students to meet the statewide graduation requirement. So there are also many opportunities for students to determine whether one is better for them as opposed to another. So we do have a bit of a gift of time in this system because there are a variety of options for students that lie within each one of those pathways.
So as I was listening to you, my mind went right to picking a major in your freshman year. That's, that's not the case. There is, there is room for, for the kids to kind of go back and forth.
Yes, absolutely. And honestly, there are some pieces of evidence that cross between the different pathways. So, you know, it might be pick one piece of evidence from this group and additional two pieces of evidence from this group. While you might be picking one from above, there are five different options. And while you might be picking two from a lower category, there might be five to 10 different options. And in some of the cases, PDE has designated what those options are. And in some cases, we have been able to take a look at our local data and our local circumstances and then provide some guidelines that align to what we do here at Seneca Valley. So there are many options. So while it appears that there are five pathways, there are also many options that reside within each one of those pathways for students.
Great. Thank you both for two good answers.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Nickel.
And I'll apologize at the start because I have three questions, really ones to follow, going to one of Fred's questions to you, Dr. McKinley. But if we can start with Dr. Polano, and I apologize if this is something that is crystal clear and I'm just a little block headed tonight. But when you talked about the students who had taken those courses in the 2019-2020 school year, and there was that federal waiver that they have been deemed proficient if they passed the course. I guess I just don't understand what the incremental value is, or don't want to understand clearly, the incremental value of taking the exam to get the numerical score. I mean, if they're deemed proficient, aren't they deemed proficient? Do they need some alternative pathway to consider?
So I think it depends on the individual circumstances of the student. Generally speaking, I would say it is likely that not many students would need the numerical score in order to find themselves in pathway two for graduation. So while the waiver and other legislation that has followed has indicated that students that were enrolled in the 1920 trigger course are deemed proficient, it doesn't accompany that with a numerical score. And that Keystone composite pathway indicates that, you know, maybe you don't pass all three Keystone assessments, but you've passed, you know, you have two proficients and one basic or one proficient and two basic, and you can meet that numerical score of forty-four fifty-two. So truly, the only interest in participating in the Keystone exam for a trigger course that a student participated in in the 1920 school year is so that they have access to all five graduation pathways. So we as a district have to ensure that all students have access to all five pathways. And by offering the Keystone exam to those students who are part of the waiver last school year, we ensure that all students have access to those five pathways.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you clearing that up. The next one is the follow-up to one of Fred's questions for you, Dr. McKinley. And I just, I'm thinking of this, and it may just be semantics and you can give me some clarity around the diversity question and the coursework that we've got. I mean, I too, as I responded to different requests and questions in the community, really pointed to how we were weaving through all of our curriculum. Some education around some programmatic and otherwise references to diversity and inclusion and African-American history in particular was what our alumni had come in for. I, what I heard you say was that it was looking at all the coursework for, to, to look to the appropriateness of the curriculum. And I just, I'm not sure what you mean by appropriateness. Is it sort of, okay, this is inappropriate to include in coursework? Or are we appropriately weaving this topic into any subject matter that we can take in 12?
Yeah, and it's really, and that may have been a poor choice of words, but I think maybe a different way of saying is we're looking at our curriculum now through the diversity, equity and inclusion lens. And two of the, two of the departments, two of the departments that I've met with are social studies and English. And I think all of us can see that direct relationship with those two. Two other departments I've met with are math and science. And those might be further away. And, and when Dr. Polano and I met with the math department and the science department, both of them, they jumped in and pointed out things that we hadn't even thought of. And so, and I'm going to continue with that presentation with all of the departments that we have throughout the year. Because what the work we're doing in DEI is, is we want it to be pervasive. And we want students to experience it in every course that we teach in one way or another. And, and there have been accomplishments in tech ed or technology or math or science or whatever. And, and those need to be pointed out too, and the positives need to be pointed out. So I guess we're looking at it from every angle, using certain tools that we've found to do it and having the conversations with those departments.
Okay, perfect. And the last question, and this one won't surprise you, Dr. McKinley, but you know how how important, I believe, personal finance and financial literacy are. Could you just take a second or two and speak to how personal finance one and personal finance two are going to interweave? I mean, I, you know, I've been in the personal finance classes many times and it's always been juniors and seniors. Are we looking at offering personal finance? We're trying to maybe sort of We're trying to maybe sort of suggest to our sophomores and then move on from there? I'm just curious about how those still work.
We are. And as you're aware, because it's a semester course, we don't get to go into great depth with personal finance one. So, and I'm going to look over here at this other screen to see that we're, we're talking even more about investing. We talk about some of our credit in the, in the first course. We're going to go deeper into credit and what that means personally to people. We're going to talk about debt. We're going to talk about bankruptcy. And that's where students will learn. Identity theft is a thing that they're going to look at. Insurance, home rental and purchase. So they'll be able to get so much more depth in a, in a second course. And yeah, we are going to look to eventually offer it to younger, younger grades so that they have an opportunity to take this second course if they so choose to get depth. We've been back and forth, and I argue with myself. Should we make personal finance a required course? Well, when you make that decision about having it as a required course, it takes away from something else. And, and so, do I believe it holds that much importance? I do. But, but I haven't crossed over that line yet to say, yeah, we do need to make it a required course because it does take away from other things at that point. But any student can, can fit it into their schedule and is able to take it.
And one last question, logistically. I suppose it'll be a requirement to take personal finance two to have completed personal finance one.
That's correct.
Well, I mean, as I said, you know, it's close to my heart. I've been in the classroom through my junior achievement curriculum. Whether it's through JA or as a guest lecturer, I'd be thrilled to come in and take a deeper dive into credit and budgeting and some of the topics that I know we broach in personal finance one. So thanks. I'll look forward to hearing more.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Ms. Whittle?
I have three, three short comments. Thank you, Dr. Polano and Dr. McKinley. I remember when I started on this board and we were talking about adding orchestra to the elementary. And we were like, do we have the numbers for that? And of course, we did to support that class. So I want to thank, obviously, the instructors that we vetted through. We, we selected must have the passion, the passion and the culture to have such an area of arts to grow as rapid. And I am so excited to see this added to our curriculum. So that's my first point. My second point is, I look forward, I like to see that, I knew it was going to come, the diversity of voice and history, that program. I look forward to seeing what you report for the next couple of years. Matt, I, I remember how passionate you get. We don't see you here getting all excited like you're coaching a game, but we can hear it in your voice. But I looked, I look forward to seeing how that, this is going to evolve into our curriculum. And I'm glad that Mr. Peterson asked the question. I had the same, are we going to try to trickle this down into the, the younger grades? So I was happy to hear that. And my final comment is about, we, we learned something from the pandemic. The first thing that we're going to apply, and that's the, I can never say that, the, the learning as far as virtual learning and adding that to our curriculum options. So I'm glad that we're taking some positive wins that we've learned through this pandemic and turning it into a positive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whittle. Are there any other comments or questions?
Oh, and who's up behind me?
Okay, Ms. Bradle?
Thank you, Mr. DiTellio. I'll keep it brief. These questions are for Mr. McKinley. One, on the customized learning pathway or, or course, courses that you plan on offering. Is that available down at the seven and eighth grade level? Or is that just nine through 12?
It will be, we're going to start even 11 and 12. We're trying to identify current 10th and 11th graders to which it applies. However, we, we're big into student agency within courses. And that can go down into the seventh and eighth grade and perhaps even into the elementaries as well. Where students have options, how they want to present, how they want to present their learning, a book that they want to read or things like that. That's the beginning of customized learning. So that, when they get up to the high school level, you know, and we're, we're offering the whole, the whole repertoire, they have an idea of how they want to proceed. So that part, that small part is able to, to work its way into the lower grades.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And then on your, under your list of new courses, you mentioned internship and employment. Could you explain the parameters for that? And I assume that would be course credit for maybe a junior or senior?
That's correct, yeah. And we've done it informally with juniors, with students in certain circumstances. We're doing it more formally now with juniors. There are more and more students working. And what we try to do is, is look more at a career type of aspect than just working to work or working to make money. Some students, don't get me wrong, they do need to work to support their family, to help support things like that, especially now. And, and we take all those situations into, into consideration. But then when you're talking about internship and things like that, we are looking to place students into healthy situations where they can learn more. And sometimes it's learning more about what they don't want to do. They think they want to go a certain direction. And, and they, they learn that, no, that's not the, the thing at all. We've had some success with that with our graduation project. And now we're looking to expand that into course offerings as well. So I don't know if I specifically answered your question, but I gave you a little bit more down that road anyway.
Yes, you did. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bradle. And no others. I'll throw my comments in there and praise of what you've done, what the administration has done with our course offerings. One of the, the unique things that we have is, you know, we probably have some of the most robust courses that we can offer, even in the college and high school setting, that, you know, we're able to allow parents, you know, their students can come, take classes here, that they can take those college credits with them. The things like personal finance, you know, Mr. Nickel was talking about that and getting a finance two. That's important because as Dr. McKinley said, it's a deeper dive into the real world. You know, you see all the memes out there that say, boy, you know, no one taught me ever how to do taxes and what, what is credit? And what is insurance? Well, we're going to do that. We've been doing that to some point through our personal finance. And as Dr. McKinley said, it's one of those things that's right up against the line. It's important enough, but what do you bump for it? It's, it's encouraged for all the students to take. But the course offerings we have go way beyond that because we allow students to personalize their education. We allow the parents to personalize the education of other students. Heard of other districts that don't have these types of offerings. You know, the kids go through, they get their education, what's needed. But to be able to explore things before they get out in the real world and go into college, we give them that opportunity here. And the administration for a decade plus has been doing a wonderful job of making sure we grow the programs through the cyber and through in-person. And now we're going to have an asynchronous and synchronous component. That, to me, is amazing. So as Dr., excuse me, Dr. McKinley was saying, to be able to offer those and find that these are something good, as Ms. Whittle said, coming out of COVID, that we're able to do that is, is remarkable. So I'm appreciative of all the hard work that you've all put in over, you know, the past year, making sure that we're updating and continuing to grow the, the programs. So with no other questions or comments, then we're going to move on in our agenda. And this is where we come up to our public comment portion. And we have a returning speaker this week. Mr. Ty Benstrom. I am his elected school board member. And his address is listed as 280 Whitestown Road, Harmony, PA. That's Lancaster Township. And he would like to speak on the subject of return to school. Mr. Benstrom, welcome back. Again, you know how this works, you have four minutes. I'll give you a little tap, let you know you're getting close on time. But, the microphone, sure, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Still wasn't quite the turn. I was thinking it might be. My two kids and myself make up about three quarters of the people sitting here in the room this evening. But yes, I spoke last week. After another week of cohort confusion and the, the schedule, I found myself needing a little bit more clarification. So the schedule that was put out for the remainder part of January has two asterisks at the bottom. The one says, in order to move to the traditional in-person instructional model, all students attending school five days per week, Butler County must be in the moderate transmission level for two consecutive weeks. So I did a little bit of research, my wife. And I looked into the attestation. And what we found was the attestation does not require Butler County to be in a moderate transmission level for two weeks for all students to return to the five days per week model. What the attestation does require is that the school district follow the recommendations for K to 12 schools following identification of COVID. That's the, that's the tables that dictate how many students can be tested positive and for how many days the school would have to then close to clean and do contract, contact tracing. And also the order from the Secretary of the Pennsylvania Department of Health, the order on the requirement of face coverings. Those are the two requirements I did find. So it kind of led me to a question, I guess. After our research, are all the other school districts around us defying the state? Are they breaking the law? There are other school districts that are at five days. And I believe that the answer is no, that they're not. They're putting the importance of in-person education at the forefront while complying with the attestation to the best of their abilities. Dr. Vitale, I understand you said it's not fair to compare other schools. I also realize that, you know, having all students in five days a week would likely lead to more frequent closures to clean the school. This is now the second board meeting where you've mentioned the misters that Seneca Valley School District has for cleaning purposes. And they seem like they're pretty efficient, perhaps making the cleaning process faster. But I, I got to say, whenever we started looking at what other school districts, where they were at, what they were doing, we noticed a letter from the superintendent from the Butler School District that went out on, I believe, the 16th. And Butler Area School District has proposed to voluntarily close to clean on Fridays. Or Mondays, I guess, depending on how the schedule works. And the significance of that day of the week being closed, and when I say closed, they're remote, is, is my understanding. That, that allows them Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, three days, to clean. That's the minimum number of days for cleaning that the tables in the attestation talk about. I will mention that there is an asterisk even on the 14 days. It's a recommendation of, of closing if, if the school district hits those numbers. And at that point, after the three days, the schools are free to reopen. Their numbers reset, which sounds a little bit similar to what you were speaking about with the dashboard. I'll be honest, I came in here thinking there was three cases in the district, probably like most others. So they're, they're, they're free to reopen. They're free to reset their numbers. And that method apparently was approved by Pennsylvania Department of Education. So in closing, I just really want to offer to the board, you know, think about what these other school districts are doing. See how things are going for them. I realize they're closing down. But they're reopening and they're cleaning. And they're getting their students more in-person education, which I believe is very important. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Benstrom. Typically, we don't respond. However, I think this is important for Dr. Vitale.
Yes, thank you. So I do want to add that you're correct on the attestation form. But when you sign it, the recommendations now become requirements. So that's important to keep in mind. The method that you talk about at Butler, closing on Fridays, that's what I spoke about this evening. That's exactly, we were already in that model, so we're not changing that. That will allow us to reset, except for this week when we're in session on Fridays. The instructional models are driven from the attestation form. So when we say, well, that's not required, well, it is because the recommendations are now requirements. What I think is important to point out, the context in districts. Some districts, first of all, I know of only one high school across three counties in our region that's going five days a week, one. And that is because they have less than 30% of their students showing up in person. We don't have that. If we open five days a week, our buildings will be pretty full. We know that. So I think that's part of the context when I say it's not fair to compare to other districts. The other, we have 1,200 kids in 1112 building, 1,200 kids in a 910 building, 1,200 kids in a 78 building. The other piece that I think makes it difficult to understand, some districts that are five days a week in their elementaries, they have declining enrollment. And they have buildings that were closed that they reopened. We don't have that. We don't have declining enrollment at Seneca Valley. So if this board chooses to go to the five-day-a-week model, we won't be able to space kids out like we can in the current cohort. As we've spoken before, I, I understand how difficult this is. And I am empathetic. We want nothing more. Our lives are easier when we bring kids back five days a week. It's easier. Every piece of logistics and operations are easier for us. And then on top of all that, you know, we're looking at snow tomorrow morning. So let's not forget, we're still facing winter and possible delays and possible closures. Now hopefully tomorrow morning won't be that. But there are a lot of factors that, that are in place here. And I appreciate your comments. I hear you. But I want to make sure we understand the two items on the attestation. When you sign, you're agreeing that the recommendations are now requirements. And if other superintendents and other school boards are willing to sign that and then not do it, that's up to them. I can't speak to that and I won't speak for them. But know that in this county, all the superintendents work together closely. And we stay in communication closely. So I would encourage people, instead of cherry picking what this district does or that one does, because, oh, by the way, some of the ones that opened five days a week last week are already closed. That seems to be the point that parents forget. They see, oh, they're in a five-day-a-week model. They're already closed. So that is the risk we're taking. That if we go and ignore the attestation form and say we're not going to follow the recommendations, then this board needs to vote on that because I'm not signing my name to that as a commissioned officer of the state. We have too many kids in our buildings. We do not have declining enrollment. We don't have an extra building we can open to spread people out. We just don't. This district has been run very efficiently. Our buildings are full because we have chosen as a district not to build new buildings until we needed them, which is why we're building one right now. So I hear you. I'm empathetic. But I do want to make those clarifications in public. That is not true. When you sign the attestation, the recommended models are driven, when you're in substantial, they are driven off of your numbers in the county, whether we like it or not.
Correct.
Thank you.
They, they do not require cohort, though. I cannot find the cohort requirement.
I will send you that link. Yeah, we've sent it to parents. As a matter of fact, when you hear the public say, and you hear the press say, open schools. They're not talking about Seneca Valley. We're open. There are city schools that have not been in at all, not even in cohort. So we want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. I can show you the models and what's recommended. And the Pennsylvania Department of Education is recommending full remote for secondary, we're in cohort, so we've gone one above that. And they are recommending a hybrid for elementary. And we're in the hybrid. And I can show you, those two are linked. The recommendations are requirements. If other districts interpret that in other ways, that's on them. We have consulted with legal. We have consulted with the Department of Education. We have written them. We've tried to clarify, and that's where we sit.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Dr. Vitale. And we're going to move on in our meeting. And I am going to look for a motion that we approve the following, to approve our minutes from our reorganization meeting of December 7, 2020, and our action meeting of December 7, 2020. Our treasurer's report, that's included in our backup. Our general fund bills in the amount of $6,316,482.95 is included in our backup. And our construction bills that are $5,590,141.23. And that's also in your backup. Can I have a motion, please? Thank you, Ms. Whittle. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any discussion on any of these issues?
Mr. President, if I may.
Mr. Peterson.
This is actually a question not from Ms. Burner, but from Mr. Miller, Randy Miller. Do we still have him?
That's a great question. Yes, Mr. Miller, there he is.
Mr. Miller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I don't mean to catch you short on this, this is a little item, but I noticed when I was going through, there was a, I think it was a change order for what looked like mediation of a retention pond that was on our neighbor's property. I, I know how much we want to be in good, good graces with our neighbors and be good community citizens. Would I catch you off guard if I asked you for just a couple of sentences on what that's about?
There was a, some discussions, some negotiations going back and forth in terms of, we do have a secondary means of egress, that secondary access road for emergency only, that will tie into their property that allowed our development to happen. We also had to get some easements, an easement document prepared by Mr. Hoffman's office to allow us to get our storm drainage and retention ponds in there. So in an effort to, to go back and forth and make things go, go well and go smoothly, there was other things that they needed to have done, but by us suggesting and offering to just get that, get that basically cleaned out so that we did not have any overflow or back charge of storm water onto our property, it just made sense for the district since we would be adding to the overall storm water to get that cleaned out so that we didn't have any issues during construction for our project.
Good retention ponds make good neighbors. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none, Lisa, if you call the roll, please.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Bradle?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Whittleson?
Yes.
Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to administration action. Mr. Nickel?
Happy to help. Under administration action, I would like to make the following motion with regards to following items, a motion to approve. The first would be board policies, to approve the following board policies. They are detailed in your backup. They start with policy number 212, reporting student progress. It is revised and it's in our first reading. Policy number 217, about graduation requirements, it is also revised and it's, it's in its first reading. And policy 218.4, for discipline of student convicted adjudicated of sexual assault, this is revised as well and it is, it is in its first reading. The second item is under school bus drivers, to approve the new list, excuse me, the list of new school bus drivers since September 21st of 2020 for both ABC Transit and Valley Lines. That list is in your backup. Next, the revised phased school reopening health and safety plan, to approve the revised phase reopening health and safety plan. Those revisions are detailed in your backup. Next, the appreciation letter to the Butler Health System, to approve the appreciation letter to the Butler Health System for the support they have provided throughout the pandemic. That letter is in our backup. And I believe finally, committee assignments, to approve the school board committee assignments for 2021, those are also detailed in your backup. That is my motion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Whittleson. Any discussion? Anyone? Not hearing any. I just want to make a couple of comments. One was on the, the committee assignments. You'll notice in the legislative, Mr. Nickel and myself are named both as representatives. We're going to tag team this. I volunteered Mr. Nickel for it a little bit. But I wanted to encourage all the board members, as you're reading the paper, as you're doing anything that you think is going to be important for the public to know from a legislative standpoint, how it's going to affect schools, you bring it forward and you report on it. One of the things that, that we were talking about, you know, it's easy for me, you know, with my involvement in Peasars, that I'm going to see a lot of that. So that's easy for me to bring in and update everyone there. So just keep that in mind, you know, because we want this to be a whole board activity. I'm also going to ask Lisa for next month, because of the governor's budget addresses on the, it's after our first board meeting, so we're going to move legislative to our second on the action meeting and we'll update everyone then. I think it'll be more meaningful to, to the month, so we'll do that. So with that, is there any questions?
Mr. DeTulio, just quickly, if you don't mind, since you brought that up, I just want to take a second personally to thank Fred Peterson for having done a great job with legislative updates for these many years. He's taken that task on seriously. He's relayed things to us in a real cogent and thoughtful fashion, and I just want to take a moment personally to thank him for making that commitment for these last couple of years.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. I really appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other requests or comments, questions, Lisa, if you call the roll, please.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Bradle?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Whittleson?
Yes.
And Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to instruction action. Ms. Harrison?
Thank you. Tonight, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following instruction action, approve the conference request as provided in the backup.
Thank you for the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Lisa, if you call the roll, please.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Whittleson?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Ms. Bradle?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to business and finance action. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you. I'd like to make the motion for the approval of the following business finance actions. First is the VOTEC, VOTEC Authority Bond Refinancing. Approve Resolution A and Resolution B regarding an agreement between the Butler County Area Vtechnical Vocational Technical School and the Butler County Area Vocational Technical School Authority regarding a proposed bond refinancing project. The second is the ABC Transit Amendment Agreement Amendment, approve ABC Transit Agreement The third is Valley Lines Inc. Agreement Addendum, approve the Valley Lines Inc. Agreement Addendum. Fourth item relates to change orders, approve the construction change orders for the new K through six elementary school at Erman Road. Next is budget resolution, approve the budget resolution indicating that the district will not raise the rate of any tax for the support of its public schools for the 2021, 22 fiscal year by more than 3%, which is the Act One Index for the district as established by the Department of Education. And the last item is a bond issue resolution, authorize the incurred, the incurring of non-electoral debt by the issuance of general obligation bonds, series of 2021, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $27,975,000, covening to pay and pledging all available taxing power of the local government unit for the payment of the bonds, establishing a sinking fund and appointing a sinking fund depository, fixing the form, maximum interest rates, maturity, redemption, and other provisions for the payment thereof, authorizing the acceptance of a proposal for, for the purchase of the bonds, authorizing a filing of the requirement, acquired documents with the Department of Community and Economic Development, ratifying the direct, ratifying and directing certain actions of officers, and making certain other covenants and provisions in respect of the bonds, which is included in the backup.
Thank you for the motion, Mr. Jacobs. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Before I ask for any comment or questions from the board, we have Mr. Brewer and Ms. Reese Henry on the Zoom call with us, and I'm going to ask them to guide us through where we are, how we got here, and the next steps and what it's going to hap, what's going to happen if we approve this resolution and what that means for us. So I'm not sure which one of you want to start. I'll let you guys fight it out.
Well, Mr. DeTulio, this is Chris Brewer. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you all this evening. I'm going to go first only because what I can, what I need to say, I think is very brief. This document before you is one that our office prepared, Ms. Burner's had input to it, so has Mr. Hoffman, and of course, Ms. Henry. It is a document, as you've seen in the past, that authorizes the incurring of debt, just as its caption set out. The Local Government Unit Debt Act, which governs how school boards go about borrowing money, sort of sets out a lot of the terms and conditions and provisions that are in this document. And it's also, of course, constructed and written to match up to federal tax and securities laws. If you do approve this action, then you will have an occurrence of debt on the books that will allow us to proceed to a bond issue. And I'm going to turn it over to, to Alicia because what she has to tell you is much more exciting and real than the dry words of my legal document. But I think that the fact of the matter is, is that you are now in position, if you should proceed tonight, to acquire the second large chunk of dollars you need to keep the school construction project moving forward. So with that, Alicia, I'm sure you'd like to talk to them about the market and where we are right now and today, this week's events.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board and administration. An answer to your question, Mr. DeTulio, if the resolution is passed tonight, we will begin pre-marketing the bonds all day tomorrow with a formal bond sale Thursday morning that will officially lock in interest rates and the district will have no interest rate risk after that point. Interest rates are cooperating. You may remember, I had a buffer built into the numbers I projected last Monday, and interest rates have continued to cooperate, even though things in the market would maybe speak differently. Your projected interest rate today is just a 2.1% all N T I C. So my desk is suggesting we enter to the market as at some point the Muni bubble could
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Brewer or Ms. Reese Henry? Hearing none, seeing none. It's great to see you two again, and I appreciate you being here. You've been bond counsel for us for, as long as I've been on the board, Mr. Brewer. So it's, it's always appreciated, you know, what you two have done to support our bond sales, making sure that we're, you know, getting the best rates that are out there and we're doing it the right way. So we do appreciate everything you have done and the fact that you'll come and explain it to us and dumb it down for, for the rest of the board members. It's greatly appreciated, at least for me, it is. So.
Mr. DeTulio, we appreciate very much working with your district. You all ask good questions. You all are thoughtful about to process. Your administration's great. You actually make our job a little easier because this is a well planned, thought-out plan. And although we can't always guarantee all results, I do think that by taking steps in the measured way you do, it puts you in a nice position to obtain good interest rates and a nice financing.
Thank you very much. I'll look around for any other questions, comments on not just the bond issuance, but any of the items in business and finance. And not seeing or hearing any, we'll move right to a roll call.
Mr. Peterson? Ms. Bradle?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Whittleson?
Yes.
Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to personal action. Oh, before that, Ms. Reese Henry, thank you very much. And if you wanted to drop off now, we would completely understand. So thank you very much for.
Thank you, it's our pleasure.
Indeed. Good night.
Good night. We'll move on to personal action. Mr. Whittleson?
Thank you. Tonight, under personal action, I would like to make a motion to approve the resignations, the appointments, leaves, retirements, the financial incentive program for professional substitutes, and the memorandums of understanding.
Thank you for the motion, Mr. Whittleson. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Since we discussed all these items in executive session, we will move right to the roll call.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Whittleson?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Bradle?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We are in receipt of 10 pieces of communication. They've all been read and responded to by the administration and the board has seen them all and read them all. So at this point, before we adjourn, I'd look for any other item to be brought before the board. Looking around, seeing none. I do have one that, that I'd like to report, and I'm happy to report that I was successful in being reelected to the Peasars Board of Trustees. I will be serving for another three years on that board, and I appreciate all the help